With that being said, I'd like to call to order the regular lease, uh, the special meeting for the design, design review board on Wednesday, July 21st, 2023. First, we'll start with roll call. Kate Beal.
Kate Beal here.
Polly Gardo Rice.
Here.
And Jolene.
Here.
All right, Stephen, I'm here. Um, let's go straight to application ZC 23 dash 24, Prospect Enterprises, the owner Paul Vitaleano, a VHB applicant for 11,600 square foot retail building, plus or minus 2,400 square foot restaurant, and plus or minus 23, 25 square foot restaurant, and the drive-up ATM at 1263 Hop Meadow Street, formerly Wagner Ford. Jolene, sorry. Well, he's doing it, you just want to state your name and, um...
I know you do the microphone, I believe, right?
You just move that.
Okay. Thanks.
George, before he starts, we'll just recognize Elaine Laney who's doing the meeting and is seated.
Almost.
Almost seated. Three, two, one, seated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, my name is Paul Vitaleano. I'm a civil engineer with VHB. We're located in Weathersfield, Connecticut. Other members of our party here today, we have the architects, who will introduce themselves momentarily. The applicant Greg Nanny is here, and my associate from VHB Katie Ianati is here as well. So basically, I want to spend most of the time tonight letting the architect speak about the building and the comments he had. So I don't really want to get into too much detail on the site plan because we only had a couple of minor changes, but I do want to point them out. Uh, those changes really, we tried to balance some of the comments that we received, both from this commission, I'm sorry, this board regarding tree species, crab apples in particular. We also received comments from the engineering department that had some apprehension about larger trees near the sidewalk. Um, and then also, to be completely forthright, we had some tenant concerns about view sheds. So when you look along the frontage of the site, um, we eliminated, um, some of the maples that were there, um, because that, those were the large trees that, um, were concerning for the sidewalk. Um, we did replace some other maples internally with crab apples, and there are two crab apples out front in, in front of Chipotle, which is the building on the right. Um, and we added some low-line plantings in the right as well, in front of Chipotle, so we replaced some of the, um, some of the shrubs with, with some different plantings. And we also introduced a, a segment of stone wall. Um, that stone, we were picking up on the theme that the board was talking about last time for the, the sandstone that, that kind of matched what was out there in front of Big Y. So we're continuing that theme. If you look on the right-hand side of our board, um, there's a couple of segments of wall. Actually, can I use your corner? I know it's kind of hard to see at this, at this stage. So like, right here, there's a piece of wall, and then this that wraps into the site here. So we were, basically, we're picking up on the theme that Big Y has, so you're going to have like, kind of the theme of, of the smaller pieces of broken stone, um, and then the bigger one at the corner. We're going to continue that across, and then the bigger one here, we're going to incorporate our sign into that wall as well. Um, so those are really the only site plan changes. And aside from that, if you, if you have any questions on that, we could take them now or we could wait till the end, but I'd like to let the architects.
Yeah, let's do it. Yes, please. Thank you for pointing those out.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yes, please. Thank you for pointing those out. All right. Just state your name, please.
My name is Doug Grunert, and I'm with BKA Architects. We're the architect of Record on the Project. Very glad to present to you, uh, the modifications we've made based upon your comments from the last time. With me as well is Michael Barago, uh, who is happy to answer, um, Chipotle detailed questions as well as Starbucks. So this is the first rendering. So as Mr. Vitaleano alluded, we're going to be, uh, using, uh, design elements from the Big Y as far as the sandstone. And you can actually see the retaining wall that we're putting right across, uh, where the main curb cut is to the, turning into the plaza. And we're also going to be using it in the base of the signage element as well. One more down, please. There's another view. And one of the comments that, uh, was asked to be incorporated was adding some context of the existing building. So we modeled the Big Y there to actually show you how it relates to the site as far as, um, proportion, scale, and materiality as well. Here, you can also see another view of the retaining wall, uh, where we're implementing, uh, the sandstone. I've actually brought samples of these materials as well, too, for you to actually get some eyes on it, feel it.
We're big on samples.
I had a feeling.
Thank you.
This is another site rendering. Uh, we're actually showing a little bit of the dunks in the background there, Duncan Dunks in the background there. Um, and we're actually showing how the, uh, the three buildings basically, um, cohesively align, um, you know, basically with, um, on the site and whatnot. One more down, please. Uh, this is the main entry going into the site. You can actually see the rise in elevation of the building in the rear, about six or seven feet, as we discussed the last time. And also, you can actually see the height of the retaining wall as, uh, vehicu, vehicles enter the plaza, uh, as well as, uh, the height of the signage as well, too. One more down, please. Uh, so we were asked to provide a little bit more detail on the, uh, the retail building to be determined. So we actually did start to show a little bit of textures. We're thinking more of a, um, horizontal element on the two, uh, bookends, and a vertical element on the middle. Uh, materials are still being determined, but this would most likely be the color scheme. Uh, we're also going to implement the, uh, sandstone as the base of this. Uh, we're going to use a brick that actually matches, uh, the sandstone that's going to be used in the retaining wall out front. Another view of this as well. This kind of actually gives you a little bit more sense of the height of the building. Our proportionality didn't change since the last time. We just basically added a little bit more detail to the materials. One more down, please. And this is the other end as well, too. One more down, please. Uh, keep going. I passed that. Uh, so this is the Starbucks building. Uh, so I actually brought, uh, a material or a sample of San Soji, um, Shuni. I always mess that up. I say, Mike?
Oh, Shuji Ban was saying, the burnt, the black burnt was, uh...
The black burnt.
Is it actually Shuji Ban, or is it like a foam?
It's actually, yeah.
It's actually what?
Burnt burnt.
I did pass it.
No, these are covered in plastic because it actually, um, the char is actually on it, so it's going to get your fingers dirty, so you can actually see it.
It's like you preserved it. Oh, cool.
It's kind of neat.
You have the sandstone as well?
Yes. I might have to help you with that. That's pretty heavy.
That's okay. We're strong.
It's quite dirty, too.
And it's quite dirty as well.
Yeah, it actually is.
That weighs some context for them.
Sure. Okay.
So this is an example that's pretty well color-matched to the sandstone that is in front of Big Y.
Okay, but it doesn't match the building here that we're in?
No, no, correct.
You want to, okay.
What can I make?
Well, we talked about having it match.
Well, the Big Y, the consistency is it used to be...
No, I see. I'm just, I'm a little partial to this building.
So are you using pavers like that, just so I can fully comprehend?
No, so this is just a, like, color sample of a stone texture we wanted to get from the stuff.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want to pepper you with questions in the midst of your rhythm, so go ahead.
One more, take your off, please. Yeah. We'll go through with the samples.
It's your ichiban.
So this is the silver gray.
Shuji.
This is the silver gray brick that's actually found on the Starbucks in the lower right corner, uh, where those, uh, Scott, wall sconces are.
Okay, so that'll go above, okay, or next to it, I guess.
Yes, you can see how the colors coordinate.
That's nice. Thanks.
And actually, and you can see this in the rendering, the underside of the canopy has this wood finish, almost like oak. So this is the color of the drive-it that we're using on the Starbucks?
Wow, that's nice.
And if this is all going to coordinate with the dark bronze, uh...
Okay, great, thanks.
Storefront frame.
What's that? I'm so sorry for...
That's the drive-it. That's the upper portion of the Starbucks.
The portion of the building over the frame.
Yeah, okay. So we, uh, these buildings are layered, basically. The softer materials are atop the ones, the harder ones are on the bottom, you know, bricks, glass, metals. Starbucks. Okay. Just scroll one more down, please. Thank you.
The brick is below.
Uh, and this is just another view of the Starbucks in the drive-through side. Actually, you can see where there's more brick, uh, more drive-it. And, uh, the tower element, I'm sorry, the drive-through element is intended to be a separate element. That's why it actually does have the suji ban? Sujiban, is that what it's called?
Yeah, yeah.
The suji ban wood, the burnt wood, all the way down. Um, and it's, uh, because it, it projects out, it's actually supposed to be its same el, or, uh, its own element. Um, and then that wood that I just handed out is going to be underneath that canopy as well, too. All right. And now the Chipotle. So these are the two colors of drive-it. Uh, so there's drive-it on the bottom as well as the top. And that's to coordinate also with the, uh, the storefront as, as far as color.
And that's, that's a lighter color than what was on the Starbucks? Is the other one's another shade of gray, like, in between those two?
Yeah, so these, so these are Chipotle-specific color, whereas those are Starbucks-specific colors. Um, and so this is more like an off-white in the kind of blue tone, gray, blue, gray tone.
And to get a better sense of the actual colors, we've actually got some chips of these. So you'd be looking at fog. Um, it's a little hard to tell with the texture. And then this is...
Knight's Armor. Which is the, which is the gray ton on the bottom as well as the pickup tower.
This is the one for the Starbucks, right? Two pair of books.
Thank you.
So those poles, while they're looking at our site illumination, right?
Correct. For the...
Where was the site illumination on Starbucks? Just out of curiosity, under the canopy?
Uh, I believe they do have a, an LED light under the canopy. Uh, Chipotle also has two very smaller canopies, but they also have an LED light to eliminate the pickup window, uh, and the main entrance.
That was something I was going to get to after the presentation, but sight lighting is something I, I do want to at least visit. As far as, I don't see any poles or anything, and honestly, just for your own knowledge, the sidewalk out front, which I'm sure you guys know, the town is putting in lampposts along the property, too, so...
Fantastic.
Yeah, it is. Honestly, it's freebie. Uh, well, not free, we're paying it with our taxes, but, um, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to incorporate those in the future. I want to make sure you are aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay, so please proceed. I apologize for interrupting.
No, no problem at all. Um, and you can actually see, too, the tower element's a separate element as well here, too. It's why it's, uh, all of a mono-lytic color scheme, as well as it's, um, it's a different, varying roof height as well, too. It's a little bit higher than the rest of the building to, uh, kind of get, break up the roofline a little bit.
I have a question, sorry to interrupt, but there's no outside seating at the Starbucks?
There would be a little bit of a patio in front of the Starbucks, but they haven't given us direction on what they want their patio to look like, but it would be very similar to the location of Chipotle, uh, patio seating. It would be in that, that front section.
Okay, is it going to, I know this may be cart before the horse, but would it be compatible with what's in Chipotle? You know, look-wise and texture-wise, or just, you know, so that they, you know, from the street, they have a similar...
Consistency.
Yeah, consistency in the look?
It'll have a, that same railing system around it to basically define the area, and it'd basically be a set of tables and chairs that can be broken down, moved around, so it would be the same.
Okay, so, so, so the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay.
The actual table and chair wouldn't be the same between them, but they would probably be compatible, yes.
Yeah, that just, if you're looking from the street, it's not going to be a wonky look. It'll have some consistency.
It'll be consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Does the side cutting show that area?
No.
Yeah.
Well, it shows the sidewalk.
Yes, but it doesn't...
It shows the extents of the concrete sidewalk, so that would be...
The pictures, the pictures don't show anything with outside seating on the Starbucks.
Well, they show the area.
No, I know, but...
They just don't have...
This picture that I'm looking at has nothing.
A, a concrete pad area shown, but there's no seats actually shown in there.
Yeah, just from that view, maybe it wouldn't show. These other renderings show it.
Actually, if you want to go back up to the top of the presentation, maybe you can get an overall view.
It just shows a railing and nothing else.
Yeah.
I'll keep, I'll keep going. It's got to be a little bit...
Yeah, it shows the railing.
No.
It shows the railing, but no seating.
So it's not as deep as the Chipotle would be?
Yeah, I think the grass is blocking the...
Yeah, okay, but the plan is to have outside seating.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And those would be, can have pre-seasonal patios, um, meant to be taken down in colder months, New England, and so, you know, if, if we can get, you know, May through October, it's a good year, but that, but that is normally the, the idea.
Thank you.
And then there's another view of the patio as well, too. It's, uh, like I said, it's going to have that railing system around with the tables and chairs. They're not going to be the same as Chipotle. I should have clarified that, but they're movable by Chipotle, so it's intended to be a seasonal area. Um, and then this also basically shows you how the glass wraps around it to kind of give you visibility into the store, which Chipotle provides itself on. Uh, and then the two materials, the, the dark, uh, drive-it on the bottom and the light on the top. This is the, the beginning of the, uh, drive-through aisle. Scroll one more down, please. And these are the colored elevations of the Chipotle, kind of give you more of a 2D, um, view of the actual building. And there, you can actually see the tower of the drive-through element is a little bit higher than the roofline.
And the, the tower element is meant to be vertical, and so you can kind of see in this rendering a little bit, um, there are kind of grooves placed inside that material, so it, it gives it a vertical feel to it, much like the Starbucks does, but this is how, um, Chipotle kind of wants to, like, bring that element higher, um, with also the material.
You can actually also see, too, how the, the storefront coordinates throughout the facades. One more down, please. And then this is a, a view from, uh, the main street, uh, showing, uh, the landscaping of the adjacent properties, as well as the, how they, uh, coordinate, uh, with what we're proposing. One more down, please. And then this is the opposite side, where it actually just shows you the retaining wall for the sandstone that, uh, we're using from, uh, the, as Big Y is a inspiration for that. One more down. And this is a little bit of a material board we put together for the Starbucks. It actually shows you what the suji ban would actually look in a, in a light, lighted area. Um, this is a recent project that we did, so it's actually not as dark as the sample is showing, when the light is showing on it. But this actually does illustrate the, uh, the patio and the seating we were talking about.
Does the sun bleach that suji ban?
It can, yeah. It's a natural wood, so it's definitely going to be weathered by the elements, including the sun.
Okay, cool.
I mean, this, this particular building has only been finished for about eight months, I'd say, or seven. And that actually also brings out the, uh, the texture a little bit as well, too. You can actually visibly see, um, that, that sample doesn't really reflect because it's all, it's all one color.
It's homage to the burns, uh, tobacco burns.
Uh, one more down, please.
Honestly, you should tell us.
And here is the Chipotle, there is the sample board of the Chipotle, uh, the two-color swatches, fog and knight's armor, which is the drive-it, uh, samples that we handed out. And, uh, again, this should illustrate the, uh, the patio. This is, looks like a little bit different, uh, setup with, uh, they don't have the, doesn't have that lighting, the patio?
Uh, yeah, so the pa, the patio full light, there's one visible in that, and, uh, the chairs are a little bit different in this rendering, but, um, the overall of the patio is, um, very similar. I think this is also a different patio railing than what we're showing in the renderings. The renderings are more accurate to what Chipotle's current standard is. It's a little more minimal, um, than this red with the, the series of, um, ulcers and lighting.
Okay.
Is that the end? Is that the end of your presentation? With that, I, I welcome your questions.
Okay, first one is sight lighting. There's, uh, and I, maybe I'm overlooking here, or maybe it's too preliminary of a stage. Are there, is there any sight lighting?
Happy to have Mr. Vitaleano answer that question.
Don't go too far.
Yeah, be happy to go home.
Um, yeah, so the, the site plans that we submitted did have a photometric plan. Um, as you noted, the lights in the front are, we are unfortunately going to have to replace that sidewalk again, um, but we're going to be, we're going to match the design, um, element. We have the details, we're going to match it all. There are two decorative poles out front along that, that we're going to, I believe we have to relocate one of them, um, but we're going to maintain that. When you come inside the site, um, they're not going to be the same decorative ones. Um, the details for those are included in the plan set, along with the photometric plan.
They are, or they are not?
They are.
Are they still going to, because we modeled the ones that, that, meaning the town, not we, uh, modeled the ones after the Big Y lampposts for consistency, so are you folks going to stay with the same sort of, uh, genre, but you know?
I believe the ones internal to the site, I believe we, we are, we talked to our sight lighting consultant to do that, but those, just to be clear, those are not, um, the same as the decorative ones along the front on Hop Meadow.
No, that's, and that's fine.
But they're going to be consistent.
When you said to replace them, you know, if they're all the same exceptures, it might look a little weird.
No, 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 let me clarify that. The, the two, and we're going to relocate the one, just because they're in the way of the driveway. So right now, the sidewalk's being built with the current driveway.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're going to change our driveway, so we're just going to relocate them. So the, the poles that are along Hop Meadow...
Oh, so they're the same?
The same, yes.
I misunderstood.
They're the same. They're brand new, so we're going to just move them. Um, the ones internal to the site, um, are comparable. They should match the Big Y ones.
Okay, perfect, okay. Um, the, was any thought given to taking something to break the visual of, with the parapet wall above, uh, Starbucks, that rear view is rather tall? Was anything thought as far as screening, whether it be flower boxes, lattice, or just something to draw the lot, the eye away from the, the height? And what is the height of the Starbucks, including the parapet wall?
A little over 22 feet.
So can, George, can you switch to that one, please?
Yeah, maybe the rear of the Starbucks would be that illustration.
You want the rear, yeah.
Rear side view, right there.
Which is the drive-through, yeah.
So you're asking if the parapet could drop and hide a little bit more visual interest?
No, no, not even. Just saying, did you think of anything that might just make it look less like a dice?
Landscaping-wise, probably.
Well, this is actually serving, uh, a few purposes. One is to actually give it, um, a cleaner look, but also to serve as the screening for the rooftop units, so it has to be that tall. We haven't really thought about flower boxes, um, but we have actually dropped the, the roofline in certain areas to give it a little bit more visual interest, because the roof inside it can be dropped to still maintain the screening.
I, I'm sorry, for clarification, where, where is it dropped? Is it on this, or it's something you considered?
So I would say that roofline is pretty much where those scuppers are, those, those little rectangles there.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit lower than that. So if we did actually break up that roofline, we could drop that down a little bit lower to still maintain the screening on the rooftops, the, the equipment.
Yeah, that'd give you some visual interest. That's where I'm going. It's not that I want vines going up the sides, or recommending that, you know, vines are put up the side. It just seems very immersive.
Would you be able to, like, drop it so that the, the drive-through and maybe like, like, the parts that have the shuji ban on it are just like a little taller, like you did at Chipotle, then you kind of have that consistent, like, I don't know, it would, it would make it more interesting, but, uh, I wouldn't put it as a requirement.
This is the view she's looking at. I can see what she says. Maybe just come over and take a quick look, so she can show you exactly.
You know what, like, this one is sticking up a little bit, so like, if this just dropped down like, a foot and a half or something, and like, these parts stayed up, so they looked like volume separate, and then these kind of came down where it's light-colored, and you'd just get a little interest, and it would just make those volumes stand out more?
Mm-hmm. And, and to your, if we're doing that with the rest of the buildings on the site, if you look at the back building, it's a distinct...
Yeah, they're all kind of like that, and so I think...
I'll follow that for the two front buildings.
I think that that could just add a little extra, it could take you to the next level. But I don't know, I would, I don't know if I would, uh, make that a requirement, but I think it would be nice.
We could go back to Starbucks and, and, and look into that.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
We'd definitely done that, at least with the tower, the, the pickup tower on, on the Starbucks before, and given that a little more...
Yeah, because like, I, even like, from this view, if those just came down a little and that dark part had a little more prominence, I think that would look cool.
Yeah, showcases that interesting material, too.
Yeah. All right, let's poll the commissioners for questions. Jolene, being on the end, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I just wanted to follow up on the remark you made about the, the native plantings. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about that? Are they all native, or, um, or some not, or, um...
Mr. Vitaleano would be better suited to speak to that.
Yeah, there, we do use native plantings.
Basically, the, the only things we replaced from last time, because I know last time you looked at the, I remember you looked up the list and saw it.
Um, we replaced some of the maples with, with the crab apples.
I know that was comment. Um, and the, some of the plantings that we introduced in the front was, um, I'm going to get it wrong, it was like, uh, a fire twig. Um, I forget what it is, but it's a, it's a leafy green shrub.
It's a red twig.
It's along the front there, yeah.
Red twig dogwood, thank you. It has a white, white flower on it, and in the winter, it loses the leaves, and it's basically red. Red twig, that's the red twig part. So that's what we introduced in front of Chipotle.
Thank you.
And are those crab apples on the budding sides?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the Starbucks side, they're crab apples, and actually, they, they flank the entrance.
Right, that's why, that, that's the word. Sorry about that.
Put the sidewalk in, even though it's not showing in the, right, this is the sidewalk to get to back here from here, makes sense to me.
Yeah, inter, interconnectivity. Um, Jolene, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Polly?
So I just want to reiterate the, um, idea of changing the rooflines on those two buildings. I think reflecting what you did with the back building, I think that would really make the front ones not look so boxy and bland. The color, I like all this colors of, um, all the materials, so that's great. Thank you.
Kate?
Um, yep, I think it generally looks pretty good, um, and, yeah, with those little
It's not that I want vines going up the sides, or recommending that, you know, vines are put up the side. It just seems very immersive.
Would you be able to like drop it so that the, the drive-through and maybe like, like the parts that have the shigebon on it are just like a little taller, like you did at Chipotle, then you kind of had that consistent, like, I don't know, it would, it would make it more interesting, but I, I wouldn't put it as a requirement.
This is the view she's looking at. I can see what she says, maybe just come over and take a quick look, so she can show you exactly.
You know what, like this one is sticking up a little bit, so like if this just dropped down like a foot and a half or something, and like these parts stayed up, so they looked like volume separate, and then these kind of came down where it's light colored, and you'd just get a little interest, and it would just make those volumes stand out more.
And, and to your, when we're doing that with the rest of the buildings on the site, if you look at the back building.
Yeah, they're all kind of like that.
I'll follow that for the two front buildings.
I think that that could just add a little extra, it could take you to the next level. But I don't know, I would, I don't know if I would make that a requirement, but I think it would be nice.
We could go back to Starbucks and, and look into that.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
We definitely done that, at least with the tower, the, the pickup tower on, on the Starbucks before, I'd given that a little more.
Yeah, because like I, even like from this view, if those just came down a little and that dark part had a little more prominence, I think that would look cool.
Yeah, showcases that interesting material, too.
Yeah. All right, let's poll the commissioners for questioners. Jolene, being on the end, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I just wanted to follow up on the remark you made about the, the native plantings. Can you tell us a little bit more about that? Are they all native, or, or some not, or?
Mr. Toney, I would be better suited to speak to that.
Thanks.
Yeah, there, we do use native plantings. Basically, the, the only things we replaced from last time, because I know last time you looked at the, I remember you looked up the list and saw it. We replaced some of the maples with, with the crab apples, I know that was comment. And the, some of the plantings that we introduced in the front was, I'm going to get it wrong. It was like a, a fire twig. I forget what it is, but it's a, it's a leafy green shrub.
It's a red twig.
Please.
It's a red twig dogwood, thank you. It has a white, white flower on it, and in the winter, it loses the leaves, and it's basically red. Red twig, that's the red twig part. So that's what we introduced in front of Chipotle.
Thank you.
And are those crab apples on the budding sides?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the Starbucks side, they're crab apples, and actually, they, they flank the entrance.
Right, that's why, that's the word. Sorry about that.
This is the sidewalk to get to back here from here.
Yeah, inter, interconnectivity. Jolene, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Polly?
So I just want to reiterate the idea of changing the roof lines on those two buildings. I think reflecting what you did with the back building, I think that would really make the front ones not look so boxy and bland. The color, I like all this colors of all the materials, so that's great, thank you.
Kate?
Yep, I think it generally looks pretty good, and yeah, with those little changes, I think that'd be great.
And Elaine?
Uh, I don't have anything. I thought Kate's idea of kind of mixing up the roof on the Starbucks, more akin to the Chipotle and then back, was a great idea. And it looks good, I'm glad you incorporated some of that, if not exactly the native stone, close to it out front, so. I don't have anything further.
Okay. So, in the interest of expediency and the summer schedule, which the town slows down, we know, in August, is there a way to consider a positive referral with the acknowledgement that we'd like to see the elevations of the Starbucks varied a little? Or should we wait until such is shown?
I think if they're agreeable to the changes, I, I, I think you connect that as a condition of your recommendation, yes, that you could do that now.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, this is one of actually two Starbucks that we're working on right now. And the other one that we're working on, we actually talked to them about articulating those various materials that are on the outside. And they seem quite amenable to it, so I feel comfortable representing that if we go to them and we let them know that that's on your wish list, that they will give our architects some license to be able to play around with that and show some articulation. You know, the one proviso, I just want to state is that we want to make sure that we're still blocking those rooftop units from visibility.
Right, yeah, the parapet's got to serve a purpose.
That we have some wiggle room in there.
Yeah, and I, I think we'd agree about hiding, you know, the, the camouflaging, I think that's, I like that aspect, so.
That's an objective that's right in your regulations.
Right.
But, yeah, I, I feel very confident that we can get Starbucks to go along with that suggestion.
Okay, so what verbiage would I use, George, to make a motion for a positive referral with that addendum?
So, I would, I would recommend to the zoning commission a positive referral with, subject to recommended changes to articulation on the Starbucks roof and parapet?
Hold on, I'm so sorry, you went too fast. Positive referral. Recommended artic.
Subject to?
Subject to the recommended articulation and, and relief. Kate, you said it.
I said something about levels, but, um, yeah, I, yeah, I think.
I can just say articulation of the Starbucks roof line.
Yeah.
Okay, here you go.
We're varying heights.
Right there, you'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral.
We're making a motion, we're making a motion, I'm going to point out one thing to everybody. We have not, so there was signage shown on, on, on the elevations. We have not had a formal sign application, so the signs package will come back to you. So any recommendation here is not going to include.
Do we need to state that, or we don't need to state that?
No, I, I don't think so, just, so it's all clear.
All right. Okay, so I move for, uh, I make a motion for application.
For a positive referral.
Oh, I have to do this part first and then that part?
No, you're just, you're making a motion for a positive referral.
Oh, positive referral for application ZC number 23 and 24 of Prospect Enterprises LLC. Do I have to read the whole thing?
You, you don't.
Okay. It's a positive referral, subject to the recommendation of the articulation on the roof of Starbucks.
I'll second.
Oh, those in favor? It's unanimous, no one to oppose or abstain. Thank you for taking the time, and thank you also. There are the, the variety of samples, we appreciate how you had a sample of everything, and of course, taking our feedback to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with zoning.
Thank you.
I just wanted.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Since my tablet decided to die, I can move over.
Of course, sir. I'm not avoiding you. Switch your.
Well, it, it, it went to sleep and it, I couldn't wake it back up, so now I'm, now I'm just, there's no reason for me to be all the way over there.
Is that going to confuse you?
Okay, so to keep things moving along, are we ready? Uh, next up is new business, a referral from office planning and community development, application ZC 23 dash 26 of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC owner. TJ Donahue applicant, a site plan for the construction of a 3,284 square foot restaurant at 530 Bushy Hill Road. Welcome TJ, do you want to state your name just for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm TJ Donahue, and happy to be representing Raising Cane's Restaurant here tonight. Tonight, we have the architect Dan Wise for you, and we have Jeff Board from Bowler, who is the engineer for the project. We've submitted a bunch of drawings and maps, and they will go through them for you, and will be available for any questions that you want.
Thank you TJ, for the record, my name is Jeff Board, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Bowler Engineering, located at 65 LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. Just wanted to share an existing conditions plan with you to orient you to the site. So what you're seeing north is to the top of page, and if you could scroll down a little bit.
Can you make that full screen?
I know, that's why, that's why I'm like, well, I can't get into that, I think so.
The, it's, it's bordered to the west by Bushy Hill Road, and West Main Street's to the south. Our site is actually just in this location right here, just south of the existing Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. There's an existing bank to the east of us, and right now, there's currently a very large, like a four or five foot berm, landscape berm, that's between our site and then the existing curb line. So as you'll see when I go to the site plan in a minute, our whole pad is within this area, and the curb line never pushed any further south. So that buffer still remains in the proposed condition. If I go to the next page here. So what we did, we went to the zoning board, we ended up getting a variance, zoning board of appeals. We got a setback for the canopy and a side yard setback, which was the only variance we required. Everything else on site is 100% compliant with the zoning regulations, as far as setbacks, building coverages, impervious coverage. We did work with the neighbor during that process to come up with an extensive landscape plan to supplement what they currently have on their side of the site to the west here. And they were in favor of even us going for that variance with this increased landscaping. You can see as part of this plan, the road's even further to the south than what's even shown here. So there's a 50 to 60 foot existing buffer from the edge of the road, and that line that we're holding is the existing curb line currently. So the only thing that did change was we kicked this curb line a bit to the west to accommodate this layout. And where we were pinned from a site layout standpoint really came down to the constraints for these entrances and exits to the adjacent bank. Basically, this exit maneuver comes into the site here, and then this entrance maneuver for the other bank is in this location. So our development really started right at the end of that drive aisle, because we needed to maintain access to their drive entrances the entirety of the time. So it really limits what can even be developed on a site like this, because the second you start with this, I apologize for my shaky hand here, undo this. So from here over, basically, we have the minimum parking stall width, minimum drive aisle width, and then basically have the building. And this is one of the few buildings that fits in this narrow configuration. So that's kind of how it came to be as far as the layout itself. And we have a professional landscape architect who, who took some, he likes to, he likes to plant things on these things. He, he went, it was an elaborate plan he prepared that was part of your packages. So I know there had been some questions on the previous application as far as plant species. I know that what he typically pulls from our native species to Connecticut, the plant list was listed there, not opposed to any sort of, if there was a plant species that needed to be swapped out based on that list, we'd certainly be amenable to doing so. But we felt this was a, a good palette of plants to complement not only the existing buffer and berm, but the, the building itself. And with that, I can turn it over to Dan Wise with, with ADA Architects to walk through, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after Dan gets through his presentation here.
For the record, my name is Dan Wise, I'm the project manager for ADA Architects, the architect of record, we're out of Cleveland, Ohio. Let me grab this pointer here. Starting at the front facing Main Street, this is our, that elevation facing the front, as, as you saw on the plan, it's a long, narrow plan. We, out of the, we wanted to be sensitive to the local codes that, that spell out that we should minimize the use of any EFS materials to the maximum extent possible. Typically, Raising Cane's, a lot of these whole, these planes, these large wall surfaces would be EFS.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that word is.
Exterior insulated finish material.
Oh, okay.
So, and in fact, I'm going to start passing these around as I present. So since you brought the question up, Polly, I'm going to go ahead and show you where this occurs.
Okay, thank you.
So we wanted to minimize, minimize the use of the drive-in material, just out of respect and sensitivity to the local code. So the only place that we're using this is at the rooftop screens, that, the name of it's on there, it's called Summit Gray. And I'm going to actually study this too, because it's a real small area. It's right there, there, and there. And then you'll see the same configuration on the next slide when we get to that, and I'll talk through a couple more things on this slide. So we eliminated 90% of the EFS from the project. We went with our prototypical two brick types that we typically have to give pop to the elevations. You can see there's both vertical elements that pop up at the pickup and pay, uh, drive-through windows, as well as at the front entrance tower. And we're using a Belden, it's called a medium range iron spot. And so that's this more of an orange colored brick. It has some variation to it, so that's not just, you know, you know, if you get one of the full boards of, of, of these from them, the big boards that I couldn't really travel with today, there's just a little bit of variation between them, and they've got, you know, there's, it's called medium range iron spot, because there is actually little spots in it that give it that extra color and texture. The, the other brick is the Alamo Brick by US Brick. This is more of a weathered brick, it's called a sack rub finish, and that's this, this lighter colored brick that you see here at some of the tower elements. And again, we wanted to use that to make the building pop, not have such a, a uniform, monolithic type surface that you're looking at. And then last but not least, is this Gauntlet Gray. This is a, a weathered finished metal panel, it's semi-gloss, and the only place this occurs is at this one element. Typically, Raising Cane's would have, would do that in a bright red signage panel. And in my conversations early on, I was the one who spoke to, it was, it was indicated to me that we really needed to get away from showing that as, as signage and more of an architectural element. So we're proposing to do that, what would typically be a bright red one, which signifies, incidentally, Raising Cane's, their theme, One Love. We only have one thing on the menu, it's chicken fingers, there's Texas toast, crinkle cut fries, and coleslaw. But because the menu's so small, it, it, we're kind of revolutionary in how we can move people through the drive-throughs, uh, drive-through lane. So that represents the, the One Love, typically, it's done in a bright red panel, as I said. Next, oh, it's one, one more thing. So, yes, and along the front here is the canopy for patio seating. And let's go to the next slide then. You can see that in the side view here, that canopy wraps around the building, and we'll, we'll look at that in plan here in just a minute. And then, of course, the rear of the building, facing away from Route 202 or Main Street.
Oh, which road?
Route 44.
Route 44.
Did I say, I'm sorry.
You used two different names that I never call it, so.
They all apply, but we're never, yeah, we will always call that 44.
Well, I'm not allowed to call it, I just looked it up.
Route 44.
Route 44, sounds good.
Thank you.
Any questions on that stuff?
So I see some motifs on the side of the building, I can't really tell what that is.
This right here?
Is that a dog?
That is the dog. So Raising Cane's restaurant is actually named after the founder's dog, it's Raising.
Are we having a picture of the dog on the side of the building?
Well, we are proposing, that would be part of a sign package.
Oh, that's true.
Would be a separate package. We're showing what we would like to do here, of course, if that's not something that township is.
I think people will be confused, to be honest with you, a picture of a dog on a chicken, I'm sorry.
Understood, I, I see, I see your point.
I don't like your implications.
No, that's why, it doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry, and I get it.
All right, let's stick with the site plan.
Cute about the dog, but it just didn't make sense to me.
It's, it, they're new to Connecticut, so people haven't seen, like, people expect it where there are lots of these.
Yeah, it is, it is well-known through the south, and where, where Raising Cane's got its start at LSU.
Yeah, I've never heard of it before, so, welcome to Connecticut.
Thank you. Any other questions about those elevations?
So they're.
Again, we just, we wanted to minimize the palette, go with as much brick as possible. And again, here's, so again, this is the only place where we're using EFS, just for roof screening, it's up on the.
Is that a parapet? Where's your mechanical?
Is that what's in that?
Behind, behind that.
Okay, screening, yes, great. And the other mechanicals, those are mechanical there, right? Yeah.
That, that, those are the electric service panels.
Yes, I don't know, is, there is, in the other side view that we saw before, is that also part of the sign package, or is that another?
This right here, yes it is.
Okay.
Called the One Heart Love. And, and just without getting into too much detail, the owner raised money to, to get his restaurant venture started. Started off out of school, working up in Alaska on fishing boats, fishing for salmon, there's the salmon, there's, of course, his dog, Raising Cane. And then he also spent a lot of time working in oil fields, there's the oil field hard hat, and then the one for One Love, and, and then the disco ball. There's some Elvis themes to the interior decoration, and then, and a disco ball hanging over one of the dining room tables.
There's a big banner inside explaining all that, because that's some very, some very people would be like, what?
I don't think that is visible from outside, so.
Is there any landscaping, screening over that mechanical area? Right there. So that is facing west?
Yeah, let's, that's, that's right back here.
Facing north.
That's right here.
Well, it looks like there's some.
There's a tree there.
And you can see, they've got a pretty elaborate planting scheme here, which will screen in front of neighbors.
A high travel count right there in the parking lot, everyone's driving by, so.
So you're adjusting the parking to the north?
Yeah, they have a separate lot, do you want to just acknowledge that?
So, no, no, no.
No, no, down low, George.
I just want to see that, that terrible spot by Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is all being revised?
This. Yes, is that what you're asking about?
The curve, the point where the cursor is.
Yeah, it's here, this is.
Is that all being revised?
Let me let the civil engineer.
That's part of it.
Existing conditions, you can see the aerial underneath, so there is a drive aisle that basically comes down the side right now. And to accommodate the drive-through and then the passing maneuver here, we were able to close this off. And then to keep the parking numbers up, we did include this parking field here, which we do need for, for parking within the shopping center. So that, that was the intent, just to get circulation around the building. But there is parking there now, as you can see underneath it, they actually line up right with where we're showing it. It did allow us to create an additional landscape buffer, I guess.
Does that, does that, George, does that adjust that parking area, that?
So let's talk about, so you're showing, I think the primary concern, so, this is, this is, will be scheduled for the July 17 public hearing at the zoning commission. So this is out, stay out of view right now, we are reviewing this. I think our engineering team has raised the concern about that movement as you, or will.
When you go by the Walgreens, and then.
So that's, that, that is a bit of an issue, and I see you're changing a little bit, so we'll review that as.
Okay, I'm not going to worry about it then, as long as it's being.
Yeah, we were thinking about it.
Because that's always just a crap show every time you drive through there.
That is a pre-existing hairy traffic situation.
And what we do.
Don't want to make it worse.
Yep, and any of those curb modifications that we are making, we are running vehicular circulation through all of these maneuvers to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
That's not under our purview anyways, though.
No, it's not, I just, it was, I was just trying to understand the drawing.
No, I see totally, there's room to like nip it.
We haven't obviously received a sign package.
Yeah, I think it's going to be worse.
Yeah, so this is just, just an intro type thing, is there?
All right, let's poll the commissioners for questioners, there are questions and comments, I apologize. Jolene?
Hey, I don't have any.
Polly?
I'm all set, thank you.
Um, the little gray line that we're seeing, like down on the window sills and everything, what, is that just?
It's a cast stone ledge.
Like a little stone ledge, that's nice.
The, the lower portion of brick is a wainscot that sticks out a little bit further, and then there's a ledge, and then it.
I like that, return.
Breaks up epoxy thing.
No other questions for me?
Yep. None for me at this stage.
So ADA is not confusing, confusing being an architect with ADA as your name?
We get that all the time now. Our founders were Bob Achary and, and Bob Drager, and this is prior to the 1990 ADA Act, so.
Now you're famous. All right, I have no questions either, is there a general consensus, we can move this forward?
Sure.
Sure. I, I mean, is action required at this point, or?
Well, there's, I mean, unless, unless there's reason to see it back, it's, I think it's appropriate to, to make a recommendation.
Keep it going, it's summertime. So I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral to the zoning department regarding application ZC 23 dash 26 of Raising Cane Restaurant LLC owner TJ Donahue applicant for a site plan on construction of a 3,284 square foot restaurant at 530 Bushy Hill Road. Would someone like a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jolene.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, no one to abstain, or go ahead?
So when we went to all brick, Jeff, we, I heard the, the square footage called out as 32.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, because when we went to all brick, the entire thing breathed out, thickness of.
Yeah, that's, that's not us.
Okay.
We're, we're the texture.
We want to know if it looks.
I just want to make sure, we've, we've run into that before, where we change.
They're very shallow.
And increase the square footage by that amount.
I just want to make sure you pick up your materials here.
Yeah.
That's the most plus or minus at the end, then we do the plus.
Thank you so much, I just had to be crystal clear there.
Okay, with that being said.
I think the shift is coming.
All right, so wait a minute.
George, the guys from before left their paint chips here, but I think they're coming back for zoning, right? Couldn't get back in. That's just mean, you can't. That's just mean, you can't.
What do you have to do?
Where's the people have to leave or you want to do your turn?
No, it's their prerogative, but you can't talk in here if it's not your turn.
Goodness, thank you. You doing your dinner order or something?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
TJ, are you the next application as well?
I am.
Put on a new hat.
Welcome back.
Nice to see you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, go ahead.
Tonight, we're here representing the Silverman Group. We have the architect Laura Crosskey. We have the owner Holden Sabato. We have the engineer Paul Vitaleano and Caitlin Aanati.
Aanati.
And we've been working a long time on this project. We've checked in from time to time, and we finally have a, a very significant plan that we're going to put, put before you tonight, and I think Paul will lead us.
Once again, Paul Vitaleano, civil engineer from VHB, from Weatherfield, Connecticut. As TJ said, you know, we were here several years ago working on the northern portion of this, of this project, which you could see at the, just for, for reference, we, we let the image extend, so you could see that. So that's what we basically refer to as Hartford North in the Form Based Code, and this is Hartford South. So, we've, you know, we were before this board several years ago, feel we have a successful project in the north, and Silverman is, you know, prepared to develop the site. Right now, it's an empty parking lot. Obviously, the Hartford was demolished years ago, and with the leasing going as, as great as it has in the north, they're ready to move on to the south. And we're proposing something a little different, a little similar and different at the same time. It's all rentals, first of all, and what you see with the, the larger buildings are apartments, stacked flats, if you will, that's what we call them in the north. They're thirty-two unit apartments, and Laura will go through all of these in, in more detail later. But these are the apartments, which is our high density, closer to the street. As you transition back, you'll see these duplexes here, so there's a series of duplexes. The little blocks behind them are their, are their garages, with a clubhouse in the middle. Still have a central green, as we do in the north. And then as you transition to the back, you'll see single-family homes. And these are all rentals, as I mentioned. So you transition back to this. So this is a new product type that is not available on the north. And for that matter, the duplexes aren't available either, that's a new product as well. So we're excited about that. We think it's, it's different, and it's going to serve a different market here and, and really complement the north. Just a couple aspects on the site, because we do have architecturals to show you, so you could kind of get a, a look at what we're thinking for the buildings. Our, just for reference, our entry points are exactly the same. So right now, if you go out, there is a traffic signal here with an entry point here, and there is another entrance here. We're going to maintain those, because this was all kind of worked out initially with the north, with the Department of Transportation, traffic-wise, to, to maintain those, and that's what we're going to do, and it actually works in well. You would come into a roundabout, and this roundabout, you obviously could go in either direction. And in this case, what's different here than the north is that we do have a loop here for parking on either side of the green. So then the apartment buildings are in quadrants, as they are in the, in the north, and those quadrants have the parking in between them, parking in the rear. Very similar to the north, if you've driven, if you've driven through that site. We've taken the same type of design aesthetic from a site standpoint. What I mean by that is proximity of building to the street, the way the sidewalk separated from the street, the tree, the tree belt. The sidewalk network was important to us, too, here. So those, those kind of aesthetics and those kind of design elements are the same. And when you get to the back, kind of like I said, the bifurcation of the site, where we have a clubhouse here with a pool, playground, there'll be some other amenities here that haven't been really vetted out yet. But that kind of transitions the site where the road continues to the back, and you have this, this loop for the single-family homes. And if you've, if you've ever have been back there, which right now it's gated, you really can't go, it, it's really a beautiful piece of property. You back up to the river, and these homes in the back, their backyards are going to, are going to back up to the woods, to the river. It's, it's really going to be a quiet, kind of isolated area. It's not visible from the street, obviously, it's further back. Just really, really exciting to, to see how that plays out. And when you continue on the, the south side, you'll see the same thing, as you go from the duplexes to the homes. These are kind of tucked away in the back as well. Obviously, they do have neighbors here, I believe it's called King's Court. So there's some offices, and this is residential here as well. But once again, it's going to be kind of a very, very quiet neighbor to them, the residential homes. And there's really no other butters in the back or on the side, because this is where the river is that splits the site. Also, just to kind of keep it in context, this is a large site as you look at it. If you go on Google Earth now and look at it, it's within the confines of the existing pavement. So we're actually within, you can see the lighter green that we have here, obviously. You know, maybe some minor exceptions, I think, in this corner, and maybe in this corner, but for the most part, this is within the parking lot and building location that's out there today. So we're not expanding outward. We're respecting the wetlands and, and the things like that, that we saw there. So that's really it from a site standpoint, we're trying to keep it kind of high-level now to really understand your, we know this is your first, first look, it's lots to take in. So I could either take any questions now, or we could let Laura go through some of the architecture.
Any commissioners have any comments at this juncture?
What, what's the total number of dwelling units?
Oh, thank you. Anybody?
Five forty.
Five forty, thank you. Seventy single-family homes, I think four forty-eight on the apartments, and the remaining.
Twenty-two.
I'm sorry, say again.
Twenty-two, twenty-two per floor.
Twenty-two duplexes. Those numbers might vary by one or two, when you look between us and the architectural plans, we're basically within one or two of each other. We're still working out whether a house should be a duplex kind of thing, but that's the total unit count.
And are any of them going to be affordable housing?
There.
Someone might be able to speak to that.
There will be an affordable component, I'll let TJ talk to that.
We've been working on this plan for a long time. This plan that's before you tonight, we're anxious to have your input right from the outset and, and moving forward with it. It's designed to be, to be compatible with a modified Form Based Code that we have, that's presently zoned, the underlying zone's industrial, it's Form Based Code by virtue of the Hartford Form Based Code, but it also has been designed to comply with thirty, with a thirty-G application, as it will. There will be consideration, it's new types of housing types and rental housing, and there'll be smaller units, and we will have market rate affordable features of it, no matter what we build. But we wanted to come to you with a plan that could be either or, and that we want to work together to see if we can make it look great.
Does it count toward our total ten percent that we're trying to achieve in Simsbury? Does sections of this count toward that specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they will.
And you don't know how many units yet, but that's like influx based on everything else?
That's part of the discussion, and there's a lot of input from a lot of people about that, and we're very interested in, in going down the road with that.
Okay.
I have a quick question. How many stories are the apartment buildings?
I'll let Laura talk about that, because she's going to show you the elevations, and she could show you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Let's see it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Laura Crosskey with Crosskey Architects, and we're based out of Hartford, Connecticut. We've been working on the architectural design for the new community. Here is our rendering, just kind of giving you a bird's eye view perspective, very high level at this point, but different look at the new community. I'll try not to repeat too much of anything that Paul said, but we do have three building types here. We have the apartment buildings, which are a little bit higher density.
Sure.
Duplexes and single-family houses. The duplexes serve to be a little bit of a transition between the higher density and the lower density single families, give a little bit more privacy to the single families, and the green space in the clubhouse area also do the same, to kind of give them a little bit more privacy there and back. So we'll take a look at the plans and elevations, starting with the apartment buildings. And so these are three stories. These are very similar to the north, sister buildings, I would refer to them as. We have used a variety of different materials here to try and break down the scale and make them a little bit more relative to some of the smaller buildings on site. We're also going to be exploring different colors for each building type to give a little bit different of a, a feel as you drive through the complex. There's a stone veneer siding, we have metal-seamed roof with some panels on some bays, just to give some architectural interest, and elements like dormers and chimneys, just to get a little bit nicer look on these, so.
So are those chimneys functioning, or they're a facade?
They're, they're faux, but what we like to do with those is we like to get some of our venting up through those, so that we can hide that, and you don't see as much of that littering the roof.
It's almost like there's another story on top of the three, like, living stories.
Story and a half.
Is that serving a purpose, or is that to create the sloped roof that it might be perceived that we're looking for?
Yes, and the dormers help to break up that long roof line, they're just more aesthetic than functional.
But same thing with like that entire whatever amount of, like, that whole three-quarters of a story that's above the roof line, is that more for aesthetic, just in general?
Yes.
What's the total height of the building?
Um, we'd have to look at that with regards to the average grade, so.
Well, from, from the, from ground to the roof is what?
Um, let's see, those are about ten, I can't see from here. They're about ten, ten-five, yeah, so, forty.
Forty-five feet?
Yeah, roughly, so.
Okay, we'd rather just not have a sloped roof than have that much roof.
A lot of roof, yeah.
I mean, you'd have to have something, because I'm sure there's mechanicals or something up there.
Is there mechanicals or anything up in that roof, or?
We haven't explored that yet, that is an option, we've done that on other projects, just to try and hide some of that.
Prefab, and they come in little triangles.
Yeah, so in the rear elevation, similar to the north complex, these apartment buildings will have parking at the rear portion of the building, and so you can see there's garage doors on the rear here. We've tried to create a little more interest by looking at, you know, a wood grain style as long as, as well as like a more white, traditional-style door to break up the facade as well. There's balconies for many of these units, again, using that metal-seamed roof to create more interest with different materiality. And next, we'll look at the duplexes. So we have two duplex types. There's one that is at the corner building, that has a side entry and a front entry, and then if we skip to the next one, we have one that has two side-by-side front entries. Both of these will have front porches, rear patios, they will have detached garages with a nice backyard space between the building, the home, and the detached garage as well. And the variety of materials between lap and shake siding, and we'll jump into the single families, too, because there's a handful of those. We have created six different single-family building types. They are relative, but different enough to give us three and four bedroom units. These vary with one-to-two car garages, and we have a variety of them so that we can create a more traditional New England neighborhood feel, so you won't ever see a house repeating next to itself. We'll probably be able to go about seven or so houses before you even see the same version. And we'll also be exploring different color siding to create each building, single family, looking a little bit different than the last. So this is one version, this is a three-family with a single-car garage. These also have a French door, rear patios out to the nice backyards, as Paul explained these, but they woods, so it's a very nice and private backyards. And we can kind of flip a little bit faster through the next few. This is another, this is a four-bedroom, two-car garage option. We can look at another, this is a, a three-bedroom, one car. You'll start to see those varying bay windows and entries as well, to create some architectural interest. We can, it's another four-bedroom, two-car garage, exploring the use of, you know, shake siding and lap siding as well here.
Do any of the designs have first-floor primary bedroom?
Yes. Yes, the last two houses here will be handicap-accessible units. There is an option for a four-bedroom and an option for a three-bedroom, and they have a master suite on the first floor, as well as a accessible garage.
And what percentage of the houses would have that plan?
Overall, we'll be looking at a ten percent for the entire complex to be ADA accessible.
Okay. And inside those three-story apartment buildings, would there be elevators in there?
Yes.
So those would also be theoretically accessible, or have a level of accessibility to them?
Yes, all of them would.
Okay. And it's three-bedroom and four-bedroom on the houses, but not things smaller, but the duplexes are smaller?
Those are two-bedroom.
Okay.
And the apartment buildings have, have one and two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
And then there's, this is a clubhouse, so this is at the central green at, that kind of buffers the apartment buildings and the single families. We're encouraging all community activity in this location to try and foster social interaction between the residents. This will include a, a pool, main hall, gym area, and other amenities, the like. There's also a playground planned for out back as well, so. And that covers it for the architectural, if there's any questions?
Just some of the sides, would you consider, just some, something, I know you've got some components of architectural interest already, but shutters or follow flower boxes or just some of them seem like the duplexes in particular. And just give me a feedback, I'm not knocking the design, you've got a huge canvas here, I'm just tweaking on the parts that caught my eye. It just seems very bland, as far as, once you have the repetition. I love that there's seven models, you know, that's going to add a lot to it. But there were some, not facades, but views, elevations, that seemed very bland is the word I'd use. And the other concern of mine has been expressed by a couple other commissioners, as far as, do you need that roof height to establish your pitch? Is there any way, as I look at it, some of these roof heights, even this building in particular, that roof is higher than the single elevation, which, to a certain extent, you need that to establish your pitch. But it seems almost like on all these drawings, the roofs are almost excessively raised beyond what needs to be done.
On the multifamily.
I understand on the three level.
It's almost like a whole other story of.
Yeah, like a story and a half, almost.
I almost feel like, I know you're trying to create like a New England village, I appreciate that, but I almost feel like we don't need the sloped, like, the sloped roof on a building that large feels a little bit, like, it's just Gothic. Well, it's like, it's, it's kind of like trying to mask what it, what the building is, it's a big three-story building, so it doesn't, like, I don't know that we need it, I know it.
Are you saying flat roof?
I might be okay with a flat roof.
I think I'd be okay with a flat roof to avoid.
I would like to see a little bit of variety in height, not just one big flat plane, but I, I feel like I don't need the pitch on the roof. Like, I'm okay with those reading as a different type of architecture. I don't know if you feel like that would have an impact on the community feeling, but I'm okay with those feeling like, more like a, a little bit more like a city block. And then the houses kind of, I like that, it's sort of the way that it kind of splays out from there.
Or maybe since there are those different sections, you know, different materials have, some of them have, like, the dormer and the peak, and then flat, and then.
Yeah, some variety.
So that it wouldn't be like a, like a, like a die, like we were saying about poor Starbucks before.
But I don't know that I need.
Like I said.
Personally, and I don't know if I speak for everybody else, but I don't know if I need that extra height added to those buildings in the pitched roof, to feel like it belongs anymore. I think we can maybe move forward from that.
Yeah, and it might be more. Yeah, and it might be more subtle from the street. I know that some existing construction, public feedback I've heard is, I would drive by and I turn to look at the mountain and all I see is these big buildings.
Yeah.
So.
It's almost adding a whole story.
Yeah.
And I feel like just letting it come down a little bit would be better if there's no purpose, like if it's not hiding equipment or, you know, if it's just space up there.
No, we did just start off with a more traditional, you know, eight to ten over twelve roof pitch for the look. But we could, we could explore other options there.
Well, I just think about like, like a rural community that has a downtown frequently will have like, kind of like building fronts that have a little bit more of like a city flavor. And I think that you could achieve that there and they don't have to have the, the same kind of roof. And then, you know, then the house, like historic houses are surrounding. Like if you go to a historic downtown, there's lots that are like that. I know Simsbury isn't one of them, but it's certainly in New England.
Another architectural detail that I didn't see was the faux stone. You know, just a little strip in the entryway there, here and there, might also alleviate the repetition of the site. Just like I said, your hear is preliminary. These are just random thoughts.
That's a good one. We did briefly discuss that as well, so we can take that into consideration.
And that whole walls, that looks, people do that now where like a whole wall is faux stone, you know, it just, it looks different.
That's underlined. I like the balconies a lot. That's really nice to have the outdoor spaces.
Yeah, outdoor space is good.
Sanding seam, little roofs over that. I like all of that. I think those are all really nice.
It's senior living in Simsbury, you know, that's, there's significant market and you only have so much ground floor, but that's your driving force in my uneducated opinion is, you know, have those people on board and.
So where's the location for like property manager?
It would be in the clubhouse in the center.
Will somebody be living there? Is it?
Oh, no, I don't think there will be somebody on site. I'm not sure how the.
Just seems like a very large community.
Are you going to live there?
With a lot going on without somebody, I don't know. I don't really know how it works.
I don't think any of the others have any.
Let's let him speak. Can you say your name first just to remind everyone?
Holden Sabato, Development Director, Silverman. We would utilize the same staff as the north site for the south site. There would be some offices in the south side clubhouse, but mostly they'd be residing in the north side.
It just seems that there's a lot of property, a lot of locations, a lot of backyards, you know. And rentals, I'm surprised that you have the single-family homes being rental. That's a very interesting twist to the whole sign, so think about that.
Okay, let's do the, are you, you just, let's poll the commissioners real quick. Jolene, you got anything, questions or comments? This is our time to nudge them in a direction than saying that wasn't good or we didn't want that.
It'll be back to you when it, when it's a form of okay.
No, but I mean, this is, this is the time. You can say anything.
So regarding that roof line, I know that some of the apartments, the end units particularly have a third, like a loft level to the apartment that goes up to a second floor. And so is that part of the roof line consideration? Or is the roof line really a full story above that?
That was not pursued in this phase. I believe that is the condition in the north, but here they are all flats.
Okay, so that roof is just for everything?
And I think, so I think that, well, I'll wait for my turn.
Which means it's, Jolene, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Polly?
Yeah, I, I want to reiterate Kate's comment on, and Elaine about the roof. I think that's a lot of roof if we can bring down that because the buildings just seem gigantic. And I know they're big buildings, but it's just that that's a lot. And also Stephen's comment about making the facades of the single-family homes and the duplexes a little more interesting with shutters and some stone accents. Thank you.
Okay, Kate.
Okay, so what I was going to say is when you take that roof line down and create this like, let's say kind of country cityscape concept. You know, I think that when you think about the materiality, I like the variety of materials you're showing here, but I feel like kind of almost making them feel like separate buildings that are attached, like the way that a city is, would be, would might lend to the, to the look. So here you have like each of the zones broken up into multiple materials and it doesn't look bad by any means, but I would love to see it more like this building is like the brick building and then the siding, this like sided building with maybe some brick accents got built next to it. And then there was another, like, so it kind of looks like it.
More organic.
Like got built as these separate.
Like townhouses type?
Yeah, like, so it looks like townhouses are like separate, like buildings that are all connected in a way. I think that could be really cool, so maybe something to explore. And, and then I feel like for me, the low-income piece, that this is not out, this is outside of your purview, but, and it's probably outside of ours on the board, but the low-income piece is really critical to the town right now. We're at a really important juncture where the low-income part is really important.
He's not listening.
All right.
You guys will aware of that.
What's your name?
Yeah.
Fred. Yeah, I think, I'm glad you have this elevation up because I, I would not, I, while that roof is huge, I would not completely flat-roof it. I think, you know, this commission and others have dinged other multifamily units for looking too boxy when they are flat-roofed. So, but I don't think you need, it, it's almost boxy because you've got it all that high. If you could just put a couple of them with the peak and then have some space in between, it would really soften and kind of create that more organic look that Kate was talking about, like, like a little downtown, like more than.
You could run the roof lines perpendicular to the frontage, you know, and that would suffice your individual building roof lines, facade. I'm just brainstorming. This is just random.
A building this size just feels like you're trying really hard to put a sloped roof on a building, buildings that wouldn't have them if they were naturally built.
Well, they'd be perpendicular if they were naturally built. And you could do flat roofs in between.
It would be like a.
Well, kind of like what we said about the Starbucks thing?
Yeah, I think that's.
Just like, you know, a roof with some, what's the word, I'm like a parapets or?
Yeah, and also.
I don't even know what the term is because I'm not.
Articulation.
I think if you, if you think on this, even this building where it does have a sloped roof, I feel like the, the roof, the sloped part is like pushed back somehow.
Right, right. So there's like an edge around it.
Cover so much area so it doesn't have to get so tall. I don't know.
I like that.
You do it.
Yeah, it just, it's, it feels disproportionately big and since height is something that we've heard from residents.
That's all, I like the setback of the roof line, you know.
Yeah, yeah, this building right that we're in has that, that feature. That's nice.
Okay, well, I think that's most of the input we have and we're bucking up against the time that I usually like to call it. George, is there anything else we should review on this preliminary?
I think you did a good job.
Okay, thanks, George.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate you including us early on. Definitely appreciate it. With that being said, let's move right along to the approval of minutes of our June 5th, 2023 regular meeting. Did everyone that was available have the opportunity to review these?
No, and now I'm locked out of my tablet. They all shut down and I just leave on us.
Did you look at them?
I did, I did.
And they're perfect, aren't they?
No, there was one typo, but it was a typo, so who cares? So.
Okay.
It's a password that we don't know.
It was.
I trust you.
Oh, we do?
All right, so that being said, you guys are allowed to, allowed to vote if you trust me, regardless of whether you actually physically reviewed them. Jolene, are you reviewing them now?
Yeah, everything looks good.
Okay, so with that being said, perhaps Jolene wants to make a motion for approval of the minutes of June 5th?
I motion to approve the minutes of June 5th.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
I.
I abstain.
One abstention and nobody votes against. General Commission Business, George, do we have anything we should have?
We have anything for you.
Okay, when's our next meeting?
Seventeenth of July.
Seriously?
So, no, so technically you are scheduled for, we talked, we talked about this, I think, Steve. We're scheduled for seven, three.
Right.
I can't imagine we're going to have that meeting. That's.
Okay.
I mean, July, why would we meet on July 3rd? I would recommend at least canceling that. If we have business, we can talk about it especially meeting. Otherwise, it's seven seventeen.
Okay, so let's go with that premise. That's seven seventeen will be the next.
And I'm not in town, so I won't be here.
Okay, we're still going to have the meeting to talk about you.
I don't think that I can be there, so I don't know.
On seven seventeen or three?
On seven seventeen.
All right, so we'll get to that quorum.
TBD.
We'll organize that after, after July 4th.
Honestly, I'm happy we pushed through our two active applications, so.
No, we got a lot done.
Nothing's too bad there.
All right, motion to adjourn. Second.
A little favor?
I.
It's unanimous. Thank you for your time and efforts.